Judge of the Superior Court validating all the research, all the investigation we had done to date was sufficient enough to go and destroy these biologicals. And that was, I think, just a testament to our county council, City of Reedley, our environmental health staff collecting all this information, and our federal and state agencies. That exchange of information we've had for weeks on a weekly basis, we've been doing that early on, has been just instrumentable, beneficial for us. And so, we go onsite, we destroy biologicals, there's 36 refrigerators and freezers that were properly removed, transported for destruction by our licensed contractor. We did this July 5th, 6th, and 7th, all in compliance with the abatement order and the judge's requirements to get it done within 14 days. So, as soon as the judge signed that, we had 14 days to get this done, we were able to bring in the right licensed contractor and the right licensure to be able to do this. Not everybody can haul infectious agents and destroy agents. So what does it look like for biological agents? We're, these days, everybody's in full personal protective equipment, they take, we take possession of all that material, it is autoclaved, so that is a high steam process, and then it's taken out for incineration. That was a process that was done with the biologicals. That is a process that when we worked with CDC, we wanted to make sure that was the appropriate protocol to follow, and they confirmed that was the right protocol to follow as well. There was a total of 126 44 gallon containers and one 38 gallon container removed during the City of Reedley's abatement now, and that's happening right now as you believe in. I think Nicole can give you partly the latest and greatest there. There is still approximately another 10 44 gallon containers of biologicals. So we take, we do this big removal on July 5th through 7th, but there's still more, we're finding stuff. So think of this warehouse, it is packed, it is to the ceiling with boxes and everywhere, and as we're moving things around, we're finding more chemicals, we're finding more biologicals, we're having to deal with more issues as we go through this cleanup here. Any questions or comments?
Question I do have, so as you continue with the cleanup, I assume that you have monitoring taking place, there are people wearing appropriate personal protective equipment, so this isn't happening in a haphazard way, because I assume that the Department of Public Health wants to make sure that the site remains contained. So can you just talk about that a little bit more, just for the public's sake?
Yeah, absolutely, and this is great coordination by City of Reedley. Anytime we mobilize, there's a pre-meeting for safety, we discuss all the protocols with everybody beforehand, but when we go on job site that particular day, there's always a briefing on making sure everybody's got the right PPE, what are we following? And so that's pretty much run up the chain already through the respective agencies, so everybody's protocols are pretty much in alignment, and so we're all adhering to the same level of safety protocols. And so as we go through this destruction, all these protocols were in place, and there was no imminent threat to the public as we went through the destruction of the biologicals.
As I understand it, the FBI early on told us, don't go to the public, we, you know, we're looking into this. I think also at some point, my understanding, a few months ago, our Department of Public Health, or excuse me, our PIO was in communication and wanted to kind of put something out to the public, and there was like a press release that was sent to, I think, the California Department of Public Health, and they said, no, that press release is not, is not, you know, gonna work. And so, can you just talk a little bit about how the county, the City of Reedley, we wanted to be transparent, but we also did not want to harm the investigation that was taking place?
Yeah, definitely. So as we're communicating with our federal and state agencies, they're making it very clear to us, we cannot speak on this, this is our protocol, this is what they adhere to, in that they're not able to speak on an ongoing investigation. They've made that clear pretty much from day one. Now, we've had conversations with them about what are we going to do? So City of Reedley and County of Fresno, as we started having these conversations, we're, we can't adhere to what the FBI and what they're doing. We needed to have these discussions with our public, and we did that, first of all, with our public noticing requirements, and then when actually, when the media started doing the stories on it, we've been doing multiple media interviews and just trying to get the information out as well. But that decision wasn't made in a vacuum, City of Reedley and County of Fresno, we sat together and said, okay, what, when is the right timing, when, what does this look like? And we had public items for record out with the Superior Court, that, the biological destruction, there's a lot of information there. With all that information there, it's important to, for the community to understand exactly what the response was like, and making sure that we maintain public's health the entire time. Okay, and so, now, the Reedley site today, there's no imminent threat to the public safety on the Reedley site today, that items are contained, and City of Reedley is going through that abatement process. And as they kind of move through that, like I mentioned earlier, they are finding other chemicals and other biologicals, and we're gonna definitely continue to support Reedley in addressing those issues. On-site air monitoring, I mentioned that, that was done on March 3rd, water and wastewater testing found no issues, and so City of Reedley can kind of speak to that. That was important for them to do, to make sure that there wasn't anything in the water system there, and City of Reedley can speak to that. Electrical power was maintained to refrigerators and freezers. Why is that so important? We would, we, this would have become something else if we weren't able to maintain electrical power. The reason why those biologicals, we were able to go in with the PPE level that we did, is because we were able to keep them running. If we can keep the negative 80 solid, that helps our job out significantly. And that is something definitely CDC and all of us appreciated, that the electrical power continue to stay on. Syndromic surveillance from all Fresno County emergency rooms did not show any anomalies. I'd like to explain that a little bit. Syndromic surveillance, today Fresno County Public Health, we have a window into all the symptoms that people present with at the emergency room. We've had this since, I want to say, mid 2000. What that does, it gives us data to support, when there's any anomalies, when anything is ticking out of the ordinary, we're able to see that in the data, and we were able to dive deeper into those, into that data to see what it is. There was no anomalies reported through our syndromic surveillance during this time period. Another piece was, since there was COVID-19 virus onsite, and there was mention of COVID-19 viruses being injected into mice, we wanted to see whether or not, in our surveillance, in our wastewater surveillance, and clinical surveillance, so clinical surveillance is when people go out and go for a PCR test, we are able, the state of California is able to do variant testing on that. There was no abnormal variants circulating in Fresno County, in the City of Reedley during this time period. Those were two very important surveillance measures where we knew there was no risk to the public at this time from this particular site. And so, you know, these risks and these threats, they were mitigated from the infectious agents, chemicals, and unlicensed medical devices onsite, but guess what? They're still, they're still dangerous, right? We still have chemicals onsite, we still have thing, if we didn't do our job, this would have became a public health issue, but we addressed it and we were able to mitigate this through all this 14 agency collaboration there. I just wanted to talk a little bit about, it's 3900 Old Potella Lane in City of Fresno. When we were made aware of them wanting to move, we reached out to our partners at City of Fresno and gave them a heads up, gave them a heads up, this is what we're dealing, we are not done with our investigation, but we have a legal pathway that we are going to follow against this business. And so we definitely, we made them aware of it, and it's, in recent notifications, it looks like City of Fresno has stopped that particular site from, in its approval process, and I'm glad, because I think we still need more to learn about this particular business. Next steps, so we are aware of an ongoing investigation with the US Food and Drug Administration, California Department of Public Health, particularly their food and drug branch, and the US Environmental Protection Agency. EPA was brought into the fold recently for the, for the chemicals onsite, and they're evaluating their authority here in this particular instance here. They're pretty much the newest one to this response. The FBI is providing consultation as needed, and our department cannot comment on criminal investigations by the federal, state, or local enforcement agencies. I respectfully defer that to those agencies. Our department is, we will continue to support in City of Reedley with removal of the chemicals, equipment, and medical devices, and we'll continue to do our weekly meetings with our partners as well. We've offered assistance to City of Fresno to collaborate with them on any issues with the proposed site, and we are, I think this is a great opportunity for our federal and state regulations to be evaluated, particularly on the regulation and oversight of privately-funded research and development laboratories. It was frustrating going through this response, I gotta say, because it just didn't seem there was enough, there wasn't enough impact to hook to really be able to go after this business enterprise. And so, as we take a step back and we evaluate this response, how did we do this? What was our legal tools? It was done at a local level. And so there wasn't any type of federal regulation or oversight in place that we could see, and this is really kind of gleaming this from our partners, and their frustration as well, and kind of dealing with this particular situation here. So I think there's a lot of opportunities to evaluate that, and we'll definitely continue that conversation with our federal and state partners specifically, and what that could be. You know, at this time, there's no evidence of the Reedley lab being connected to a foreign government. That is something that has been said in some media circles, and we have no evidence of that. We have evidence that there's individuals of the business, they definitely live in China, and I think that's why it's important, there needs to be more investigation into this, there needs to be more agencies looking into this, and I really hope that, that continues. You know, I think locally, and I really, you know, during this response, we're gonna take a step back, we're gonna do an after-action report when this response is done, but I think already we're seeing, we're gonna evaluate our local county ordinances, and we're gonna collaborate with our 15 cities, and really evaluating any opportunities for increased collaboration. I think there's, there's something there for us to do, and I'd love to work with County Council to really evaluate that there, and being able to see what else can come to fruition with that. And as we go through any, any next steps, we're gonna evaluate our resources, we're gonna evaluate our fee structure with businesses as it comes to hazard mitigation plans, but also everything else here that we can at the local level to ensure this doesn't happen here. You know, and in closing, and Nicole Ziba will come up and speak as well, throughout this entire response, Department of Public Health, we maintained, and we preserved the public health throughout this entire response. We were able to validate the public wasn't at harm throughout this entire response, and I really want to just really support our team here, Environmental Health, but also all of our 14 agencies and City of Reedley, because they helped us do that, we didn't do this alone, we did this as an entire group. So I'll go ahead and pause there if there's any other questions or comments.
Quick one, now the, when it came to the North Point Industrial Park deal, the city's code enforcement knew there was problems there back in 2020, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. And the code enforcement's controlled by the city council. I believe everybody will agree with that. I'm just laying that out there.
Yeah.
They knew before we did.
Yeah, the electrical code violations that we saw, that was in City of Fresno, we saw the same type of code, electrical code violations in the City of Reedley.
Right.
Joe, I think you did a great job. When you acknowledged the team effort there at the end, I, you know, I'm amazed at the amount, just like a week ago, as the story was really starting to break, I mean, to start breaking a little bit before that, but I had so many questions, so I was one of the ones that requested that we put it on today's agenda. And in, just in that timeframe of this last week, you guys have done amazing work pooling all of the information that you had, that was out there, and creating this timeline for people to take a look at, and really understand all of the details that went into this investigation. I am, you know, I know that in some ways we have come under attack, that includes, you know, your department, public health, and behavioral health, and all of the different groups that are part of this. But, but even in light of that attack, you guys have done a great job getting us the raw data, that information, and providing it to us and the public, and creating this timeline and going through that. And I, and I am most happy to hear that no time along the way was the public ever at threat. I think if the public's at threat, then this thing changes pretty dramatically, and the type of response that you would see, and the type of, you know, where you would spend your energy and your resources would have changed. But finding out, as you did, that the public was not at threat, that gave you the ability to let the other investigations continue, the more legal, quote, criminal, is there crimes being committed here? Let those investigations continue by law enforcement agencies, because there was no public threat, right? So it allows you, allows us all to let them do their work without making these grandiose announcements that have been called for by some members of the public.
Right. Thanks.
I, you know, I think I'd like to hear from my colleagues, because I've been saying a lot about this issue, so I'll just be quiet.
Joe, I want to thank you and the City of Reedley for the, you know, we oftentimes talk about transparency, and a lot of times the public doesn't understand how much, how transparent you can be and can't be. And so also to come out as soon as it was reported, to be able to give as much information as was possible, certainly to be commended. So I want to thank you for that, and wanted to invite the City Manager Reedley, Nicole Ziba, for comments.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Board of Supervisors. If you'll allow me, on behalf of the mayor and the council, they sent me with a message to express our gratitude to this county, to all of you, to the county council's office for your assistance in this. We are a small city, 25,000, we could not have done this without you, but let me tell you, I am mighty proud of our little city. This was a bad player company, a bad actor company that was kicked out of Canada, they went to Texas. They got kicked out of Texas, they came to California, recruited with tax credits, by the way. They went to Fresno, kicked out of Fresno, went to Tulare, kicked out of Tulare, went back to Fresno, kicked out of Fresno, came to Reedley. This little David city took down Goliath with a green garden hose. I'm incredibly proud of our city, our code enforcement officer, and I will stand up anytime and say that we did everything in our power to keep the public safe. There has been a comment about, sure, once it was broken, by the way, a phenomenal local paper who is here today broke the story, so gotta give Mid Valley Times credit for that. Once it broke, the comment was, well now, why are you going with all the information when you said you couldn't? And let me tell you, there's a very good reason for that, and that is the conspiracy theories abound on this. I have heard everything, I have watched a local politician on national television talking about communist Chinese labs that are manipulating viruses. We had to be able to come out to the public to say, do not listen to the conspiracy theorists. Do we have a problem? Absolutely. Are they Chinese nationals? Absolutely. Are they manipulating viruses? No evidence of that. We had to be able to come out with as much information as we possibly could, but we ran it by our state and federal partners. Because when the FBI, and the CDC, and everybody else in the alphabet soup of state and federal agencies tells you, we cannot even comment whether we're doing an investigation, you cannot comment, well, when they tell you that, as a small local agency of 25,000, you're not gonna defy the FBI, right? But, once this went public, Joe Prado and I, and by the way, he mentioned, he mentioned the word to me, dogfight once, I would not want him to do this without Joe Prado. You all have a gem, hold on to him, he's incredible, utter professional, great logic. So, I just have to put that out there, because I now have made a lifelong friend. We sat down with our federal and state partners, we are still meeting with them at least twice a week, if not more frequently, via emails, et cetera, to talk about what information is going to the public, what information is out there, what conspiracy theory do we have to debunk, what myth do we have to debunk? There are a lot of them. There's a local myth in Reedley, there's a supermarket that's shut down across the street, there's a local myth that it shut down because mice got out and infected the supermarket. No, 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 the roof is collapsing in the supermarket, and it shut a year prior to this lab coming to Reedley. So it really behooves us to get out in front of the media now, to debunk these myths, because the conspiracy theorists are having a field day with it. I do want to explain to you where we are right now, though, because I think it's important. We have, right now, actually, just before I walked up here, making sure we still had staff onsite, today is the very last day of the abatement of the fixtures, the freezers, the refrigerators, some of the medical machinery. So as you saw from Mr. Prado's presentation, one of the first things was an inspection warrant. We then went back with a warrant to, unfortunately, humanely euthanize the mice. We then went back with a health officer order to inspect the freezers, find out what we had in those negative 80s that were very concerning to us. We then went back with abatement of what was in those negative 80s and all of the biologicals. We then had to go back, so you're getting the pattern here, right? Every time we go into this building, because it is private property, we have to have evidence to show a judge that we need to get back into this building and do something with it. All of that is process, unlike what you see on TV, where it looks like a warrant goes to a judge, and it's signed within the hour, and you get to go, that is not how it works for inspection warrants, abatement warrants in private property. It takes time. So we are on a process where now we are abating the furniture, the fixtures, the medical equipment, et cetera. Joe mentioned that right now we're still uncovering biologicals. I want to be clear with you, we are not uncovering infectious diseases and all of that. What we're uncovering, if you don't mind me stating, is taking a desk, opening a drawer, because we are not allowed to destroy documents, so we have to, we have to go through everything that we're gonna take out of that building. We're opening desk drawers and finding jars of urine and pee on pregnancy tests, that's considered a biological. And if in your head you're going gross, disgusting, how hygienic was this lab, I'm with you on that. And that's where I turn to one of the statements that Mr. Prado made in his presentation. We have got to get this fixed at the federal and state level. Board, I know you want to do something about this locally, my council wants to do something about this locally, we are not gonna fix this at the local level. This is a problem, these are loopholes with privately funded, fully privately funded labs, even legal labs. Now, the one we're talking about in Reedley is bad actors, bad lab, they did not want us to know they were here, that's why they moved in under the cover of night, that's why they never came to the city for business permit, they did not want us to know they were there. There's bad actors. But even legal labs, if they are privately funded, something like this could be in every city in the nation, and we wouldn't be able to regulate it the way we should be able to regulate it. I don't know about you, but I don't want to be buying products where I know there are pee on pregnancy tests in the desk drawer, right? We have a problem. And instead of pulling people together and stating, hey, public, we need to have our federal legislators fix this, let's get together and demand that they fix this, we have some local folks who are taking it amongst themselves to make us focus in the past, why didn't you talk to the public about this? That's a red herring issue, red herring issue, we need to fix this, we need to look in the future, because I don't know about you, but I don't want another one of these in Reedley. So I appreciate every single one of you that has stood up, you've called our local legislators, I know that, because our local legislators have told me. I mentioned to Joe last night, it's a little unnerving, at 10:00 PM, the phone rings in the house, you pick up the phone in the kitchen, and it's a congressman wanting to talk to you about, what have we found today? They're interested in this, they're paying attention, let's do it right, Central Valley, let's do it Fresno's way, and let's get this done. I think we have an opportunity to really fix a national problem that we have. So, that being said, down that rabbit hole and back up, right now is the last day of the abatement for the fridges and the freezers. We still have more process to go. The US EPA will come in in short order, although they have a tangle of regulations they have to follow before they can step onto private property and destroy private property. They will come in in a matter of weeks and remove lab chemicals. These are chemicals that are commonly found in legal labs, nothing unusual has been found. After that, we then turn it over to the FDA and FDB, the Food and Drug Branch. Those entities will come in, and what we will have remaining in that warehouse are probably half a million pregnancy tests and COVID test kits, some of which are unauthorized for sure, we don't know about the other ones. So altogether, my estimation is that, my hope is that by the time we enter heavily into fall, this will be another empty warehouse in Reedley, like we thought it was for the last decade. Do you have any questions for me, sir?
Well, Nicole, I would, I would just segue onto that. As a member of the board, I appreciate everything that you did on behalf of your city and the county. And as a small city, I don't think you have a playbook for this kind of thing.
I missed illicit Chinese lab 101 in City Manager School, yeah.
Me as a county, we're a little, little bit more, more prepared for these kind of things, but I don't think there's a playbook for a small city. And as a member of the board, I want to say, commend you for everything you did, because it's always easy to look back and throw rocks, but when you're dealing with it minute by minute, it's a lot harder to deal with, and I want to compliment you on everything you, you did on behalf of your city and the county.
Thank you, sir.
And I want to, I want to set the record straight a little bit on this, because as you said, there's been a lot of red herrings, a lot of accusations, and we need to be clear on that. Me personally, I first became aware of this issue on Thursday, July 27, 2023, and that's when my chief of staff mentioned the article to me that was done by your, your local newspaper. Three days later, and I'm surprised Supervisor Mendez is being politically correct today, well, I'm gonna take a page out of his playbook, and I'm not. So I'm gonna say Councilman Brettafield, let's call him out, he held the press conference on Monday, July 31st, making a lot of accusations against this board and members of the community that were simply inaccurate, inaccurate. But again, he has a history of self-promotion over the facts, and that's what this was all about. And, and it's tough, being a member and trying to do your job the right way and have that. So, and at that time, he stated, members of the Board of Supervisors knew about this facility four months. That's inaccurate. Simply stated, I knew about it three days before his press conference, and I know other colleagues here to my left and right, we, they knew about it days ahead, just like I did. So some members of this board knew, but not everybody. Nor had we ever discussed this as a board in a committee, or any way, shape, or form, and as a board in our entirety. Today's the first time it will be discussed by us as a board. And Supervisor Maxig, I want to compliment you for going on the radio last week, Thursday or Friday, and setting the record straight. And you did a fantastic job, and for me to take home message on that, which I received a lot of calls on your comments, is all protocols were followed, and we did it by the book. And we were, had state and federal agencies with us, along working with the city, and we worked together as a team to solve this issue. And you clearly highlighted that, and, and you did fantastic. And Reedley, Reedley wasn't a lab, Reedley was a storage facility. The lab was in Fresno, and had been there for two years, for two years of code violations that two years hadn't been done, where the little city of Reedley took steps in days. Days of notifying, of being noticed by the garden hose, and days took action and got it resolved, that the great city of Fresno took two years and still couldn't resolve the problem. So again, I compliment you on that, and that needs to, needs to be done. So the City of Reedley, the Department of Public Health, and Supervisor Mendez did their jobs, and that's the bottom line. The timeline that we all viewed today clearly shows that steps were taken to remedy this situation, but that's the difference between us at the county and members, I'll say members, of the city council that just want self-promotion, instead of getting, rolling their sleeves up and doing the work. We get things done, we don't hold weekly press conferences to promote ourselves, that's the big difference between the county and the City of Fresno. And in addition, we stay in our lanes. During the creek fire, we didn't go up and see what Supervisor Maxig's doing up there and doing that. Now, he readily invited us, and we went, but we, we stay in our lanes here, and that's how we get along as a body, and we get things done, because we know our place. And during the floods, Supervisor Mendez and I, we protected our communities from floods, and we worked together to solve those issues. I don't need a member of the inner-city to come tell me how to protect my farm community, I don't. And that doesn't occur on this board, because again, we work together, and we know our place here. So with that, it seems to me that the responsible person would have got the facts before holding a press conference, with inaccurate information to scare the public and for more self-promotion. You gotta love when it's an election year and these kind of things happen, you know? So I believe some members of this board are owed an apology for the inaccurate information, and I want to tell them, my office number is 600-1000, if you want to call me, or if you want to write to me, Hall of Records, Room 301, 2281 Tulare Street, Fresno, California, 93721, if you want to send it to me written. But that's what we deserve for the showcase, as Supervisor Mendez, there's a circus that goes on. And again, as I started, I'll end, I'll compliment you for what you did, there is no playbook, you rose to the occasion, and as a member of the board, I'm extremely proud of what you, your city, and your mayor have accomplished to eradicate these bad actors, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Brandon, no, no comments?
I just want to compliment City Manager Ziba. We've got 15 cities, 13 of them are small cities, and you are the best city manager.
Thank you, sir.
Because I've worked with you for over nine years, you were there before, you're a steady hand, and I just think you did a fantastic job. You always stayed the course, you did the right things from day one. You always stayed the course, you did the right things from day one, and I just, I just really think you're, you've been a great city manager.
Thank you. I appreciate that, sir. And I, yeah, it's been a tough one. Mr. Pacheco, Supervisor Pacheco, if I could address one thing, I think you brought up an interesting point, and that is that you didn't learn until this process, until only days before a press conference by a council member. That was purposeful?
Yep.
Mr. Mendez, I called Mr. Mendez directly because we were struggling getting state and federal, they are, they have to walk over this tangle of regulation and protocol to speak to locals, and it was a call to Mr. Mendez and a call to Magzig, only because he's my supervisor in the district I live in, to say, can you help us somehow? They were not even aware of all of the facts of the case because very astutely, they know that there are things we were not able to share, and they didn't press. And so, I just want to say, I know this put all of you in an uncomfortable position, put Paul in an uncomfortable position of not having all the facts, maybe having some, not others, and I just think, wow, there is wisdom in that, that our board has shown, that they didn't have to have their hand in everything as we, somewhat experts, were dealing with this. And so, I want to thank you for that and acknowledge that you just spoke the truth. You were unaware, and I can absolutely speak to that.
Yep, and I, again, had all the confidence in the world, Supervisor Mendez was in his district, he was, would be able to handle it, and, and he did. So, but again, that's the difference of us staying in our lanes, complete confidence in each of my colleagues, they're able to do their job, and, and they did it.
Yes.
So, I have no, no issue with what the county did, what Department of Public Health did. Again, we followed the protocols, as Supervisor Magzig clearly stated, and did it by the book. So, as a member of this board, I have no, no issue with that.
Thank you.
And I just want to compliment the Department of Health. I mean, you guys, from day one, have done a magnificent job, and it was a tough job. A lot of other agencies you had to work in, work with. But I just want to say something, you know, that Brian was talking about, you know, that, this whole deal with the councilman reminded me of, of Joe McCarthy in the 50s, who just launched accusations, had hearings in the Senate. They were some of the first TV hearings in the Senate, and nine times out of 10, it was all false, and he ruined a lot of people's lives. But this is the same tactics. These are dangerous tactics. These are tactics that, you know, people need to get together and, and say, hey, you know, that's not right, you're wrong.
Nicole?
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
Nicole, I also heard you interview, I was out of town when you were on KMJ the other day, but I did get a chance to listen to that podcast, you did a great job, you did a great job today. All of the information, Joe and Nicole, and all of the people who've garnished information to present have done a wonderful job, and yet I don't believe it will deter for one minute those who are politically motivated and the sycophants that follow them to try to tear down and destroy elements of our community in their, in their own political efforts. So, I think that's what we're really up against. So, I appreciate the data. Unfortunately, a few moments ago, you talked about conspiracy theorists, they are not going to be deterred by all the data that was presented today, but I do appreciate it. Thank you.
And Nicole, if it's okay, if I can call you Nicole?
Yes, sir.
We go back a few years, I had dark hair when we worked together back in the day, and I'm not surprised with the reaction and the response that you took in, in trying to move as quickly as possible to get a solution, and really appreciate, you know, making the calls you did to my colleagues to get involved and just focus, you know, with whatever sideline issues came up, but just to, to try and solve the problem. And so, I really want to commend you on that because as you've stated, and Joe made a great presentation, it's just, you know, we got a problem, let's get it solved and, and then move on forward to make sure, or try to make sure that this doesn't happen again in our community. So, I want to thank you for that, and I want to thank the, the county as well as, and my colleagues for the getting involved right away, rolling up the sleeves and getting to work, but thank you for taking that initiative to move forward with it.
Thank you, sir.
So, with that, Board and public, this, it was just, this is just a presentation, no motion is required, and we'll move on and thank you all.
Clerk?
We now move to item number eight, Board of Supervisors Committee Reports and Comments.
Any committee reports or comments?
The flood season ended well. You know, I think, at least locally, the dam operators, I think Michael Jackson did, ended up doing a great job at Fryett, along with Steve Howgan and his team at KRWA on Pine Flat. So, I think we were able to, able to do real well. I think Pine Flat ended up being 98% full when it, when it finally reached, you know, the crest of the runoff, so can't get it any better than that.
Supervisor Magzig?
Couple of things. I, about 10 days ago, had the privilege of attending the National Association of Counties Annual Conference. I chaired the Finance, Pensions, Intergovernmental Affairs Subcommittee, we passed several resolutions there. One of them that I wanted to share with you deals with fire insurance, and it passed unanimously out of my committee, and then it passed unanimously at the Board of Directors meeting as well. So, that now is part of NACO's platform, and they're going to be asking Washington to form a committee looking into not only the expense of insurance as it relates to wildfires on the West, but also hurricanes, tornadoes, and just the expense of having insurance in states like Florida and Texas, and how it's becoming very unaffordable, so I was pleased with that. Also, I attended the Loggers Jamboree at Huntington Lake over the weekend, awesome, and they haven't had that event since 2017. There were 63 entrants that participated, which was 150% more entrants than who participated in 2017, and it was neat to see the community come together to attend that event, and I made a little video just highlighting it. Many people don't remember, the locals do, but many people don't remember that Fresno County was one of the biggest logging communities over 100 years ago, and we need to get back to good forest management, get a lot of these loggers back here again, and sawmills going again so we can manage the forest right. Also got to tour Gold Arrow Camp at Huntington Lake, did a video for them. We've got thousands of beds available for kids at different camps in Fresno County alone, and most people have heard of Hume Lake, but again, there are numerous other camps that people maybe haven't heard of, but Gold Arrow Camp's been in operation since, I think, 1933 or 1934, so right at 100 years, so it was pretty amazing. I want to comment on my, one of my social media sites, some people were asking questions about when are we going to get our county parks open, because now we've got the San Joaquin River open and Kings River open, and a lot of the parks along those rivers were damaged pretty significantly. I'm going to get a timeline here shortly from Public Works, it's a top priority for them to get all those open. There's going to be several parks that open up over the course of the next two weeks. The county is going to be putting a press release out about that, but I know that we're deep into summer, there still is more summer to be had, and we want to make sure that we get our parks open to the public as quickly as possible, and Public Works is working on that. Waterworks District 18 was on a boil notice order going all the way back to February because of the floods, it took a long time to repair their systems, but about two weeks ago, that notice was lifted. So, Waterworks District 18 no longer has to, has to boil their water, so that's good news. And also, Millerton Lake Courthouse, I've received information that it's been boarded up for over a year, and I told the, the media that I would reach out to the state, and the state right now is working on a plan of action to get that courthouse rehabilitated. And for those of you who don't know, it is an exact replica. I always thought that it was the actual courthouse that had been rebuilt, but some people are telling me that it, it's a replica, but regardless, that's where the county seat used to be, and we need to make sure that that county courthouse looks fantastic. So, the state's working on getting funding to, to restore that, so that's all good news.
Looks better than the next one after that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to report on one of the committees that I, that I sit on and have sat on, but I just hardly ever talk about this one, but last week was another monthly meeting from the Fresno County Public Law Library Board Meeting, meets over here at the courthouse, and we passed the budget for the upcoming year, and after reviewing the budget from the previous year, there's definitely a good amount of money in reserve. The, the greatest debate is there are some pieces of furniture that are starting to show wear and tear, and everybody's wondering, you know, should we reinvest now or wait until there's a new courthouse built? And I suggested, I think we should go ahead and reinvest now, because probably even these pieces of furniture will wear out before there's a major change, so. But that was a fun topic of debate, but we do that meeting once a month as needed, and a great time to hang out and discuss these important matters with some of our local judges and attorneys, so glad to be serving on that board.
Item number nine, Clerk?
Item number nine, Board Appointments.
Okay. Supervisor Pacheco?
None.
Supervisor Mendez?
Yeah, Department of Commerce Commission on Status of Women, reappoint Eve Castellanos to an at-large position. The new term is seven, is the 7-1 of 2025.
Okay. Supervisor Magzig?
I have two. To reappoint James Carl to the at-large seat of the West Fresno County Red Scale Protective District, and also to appoint Chief Dustin Hale to the vacant at-large Central Valley Fire Chiefs Association seat, which expires 1/4/2027, and that is to the Emergency Medical Care Committee.
Those are the only appointments that we have from, from the board, are there any comments from the public regarding the appointments? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve the appointments.
Moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
We now move to item number 10.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the board on any matter not on the agenda?
Hello, how's everybody doing?
Good.
All right? Yes, I'll keep it short, everybody's house eating out lunch right now. My name's Andrew O'Brien, I'm with SEIU Local 2015, California's Long Term Caregivers Union. I've traveled out here about an hour from San Francisco, I'm in Contra Costa County. Big concerns about the members out here not getting a fair livable wage, and I, I think all you, all here in front of me should be a little more supportive of what you've been. I was out here a few years ago, and here we are back again. We shouldn't have to be in here banging down the doors, making loud noises and stuff, we should be able to do this civilly, and it's not happening. So, being a, being, I've been a home caregiver myself for almost 20 years now, it's very difficult and very challenging. We save the state a lot of money keeping people at home and keeping the respect and dignity that we all want to be at home. And given that said, I, I feel like that you all got that ability, and I hope you can find it within your heart, dig deep if you have to, to support these people here in this county, and give them a fair livable wage so they can have what they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Marisol Rubio. I am a San Ramon City Council member, but I am also an SEIU member. I've been caring for my daughter, who's a childhood brain cancer survivor for over two decades. And I actually have a degree in molecular cell biology with an emphasis in neurobiology, and also an extensive background in psychology, and did a lot of research on this 20 years ago, and until now. And everything that I wrote about 20 years ago has come to fruition. So, I say this with caution for you to really think about what you're doing, you really think about the investment that you're making when you pay home care providers a livable wage. Right now, informal caregivers provide a national economic value of $58 billion in California, and 46% of those who provide complex chronic care perform medical and nursing texts that yet are two and a half times more likely to live in poverty. And under the Medicaid State Recovery Program and Plan, primary caregivers who are age 55 plus, which is about half of those caregivers, often depend on Medicaid and stand to lose real and personal property and other assets in their probate estate upon deceasing, thereby creating transgenerational poverty, denying them the ability to leave also their disabled dependents and inheritance unless they can afford to hire a lawyer and handle their estate, create a special, to create a special needs trust, having a lifelong trustee for the disabled dependent. High-strust family can, caregivers can lose up to 10 years of life, and 30% die before those they care for due to twice the rate of chronic illness, advanced cellular aging at six times the rate of a single parent, 23% higher level stress hormones, 15% reduced antibody responses, 40 to 70% rate of clinically significant depressive symptoms, 33.3% moderate to severe anxiety, and one in four commit suicide. Overburdened caregivers inevitably experience declining cognitive function and overwhelm well-being compromising recipients' quality of care. A 2016-17 study found that 13 of 103 deaths among disabled persons were due to treatment delays, neglect, or abuse, which is inextricably tied into the well-being as well of those caregivers. So, I ask you today to really think about those statistics, if you'd like me to share that information with you, I'd be more than happy to give you my sources for that data. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none. Any comments from the public wishing to address the board on closed session items number 10 to 14? Okay, and seeing none, County Counsel, Mr. Cedarborg, will you have anything to report out, or can we adjourn following closed session?
Mr. Chairman, we do not anticipate any announcements following closed session, so if the board chooses, it would be appropriate to adjourn following closed session.
Okay. I will entertain a motion in a second to adjourn following closed session. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you.